Please settle down. The ninth regular session of the eighth city council is now called to order. May I request everyone to please rise for the opening prayer to be led by honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara to be followed by the singing of the Philippine national anthem, provincial hymn and city hymn.
Okay, let us pray. Ojubilanamin shaitan regime. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah rabbil alamin. Aw rahmanirrahim. Malikiyomi din. Iya kaya budu iya kanastain. Idina sirathal mustaqim. Sirathal edina an amta alaihim. Geril magdubya alaihim murad alim. Amin.
Bayang magiliw perlas ng silangan. Alab ng puso sa dipdip mo'y buhay. Lupang hingirang dulan ka ng magiting sa manlulupid. Di ka pasisiil sa dagat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit mong bogao. May dilagang tula at awit sa paglayang minamahal. Ang kisslap ng watawat mo'y tagumpay na nagrihingring. Ang bituwing nag-araw niya kailan pa may dimantidilim. Lupan ang araw ng walhatit pagsinta. Buhay langit sa piling mo. Aming ligaya napag may mangapi ang mamatay ng dahil sa'yo. O'kobe siya na minamahal. Sangsuba nga ng dabaw. Manwa kau na madayaw ya naguyon niyang udaw. Mali payon kay malanga kau ng diyos. Mata bayang kalupahan mo. Yang tanuma bungaun. Dagat muma nga supa madayka yang hisga. Kabuhian ka wilihan amkanan. Umahan na dabaw oriental. Langit muma pawahay. Yang kabutayan, yang kabatagan maya maday magandahay. Mas dihaim pa kamiku matung. Kamimu uli anikar mo. Garbuna bi na dabawenyo. Yang pakserbi sangkatjawan mo. Kolonos sida manmaki. Nengyaman bo di makati. Sangkat kayang sangkat katakan. Sangkat dagat ang kawayayuwan. Magkadak yang rumajerikay. Kayang palipot na gandahan. Sangkat jawan yang sangkukan. Iya iya nyarimaha. Tagamatim matinabaru. Tagamatim matinagdaru. Tagamatim matinagurun. Yang tagamatim matinam. Tagamatim matinagdaru. Tagamatim matinumaru. Tagamatim matinagurun. Sa diyos na bang makagagahu. Tagamatim madayaw. Tagamatim matinam.
Mayong hapon ka natungtanan?
Mayong hapon.
To the members of the eighth city council, SP secretary Jovi Mabini, SP staff, to our friends from media, to our guests from Domeral Construction and Supply, Mr. Raoul Castañeda, and engineer Fidelito Perpetua Junior, to engineer Mawalik, engineer Rodriguez, engineer Purisima, and engineer Antipolo from the City Engineering's Office Project Inspectorate Team, to our Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association. Everyone, welcome to our ninth regular session. Mayong hapon ka ningyong tanan. What's the next item in the order of business, Mr. Secretary?
Roll call, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed with the roll call.
Honorable Edmond Dupang Junior.
Present.
Acting City Vice Mayor. Honorable Roelio Pabio. Honorable Sina Princess Campos. Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaita. Honorable Jose Paulo Luis Arbat, absent, excuse. Honorable Raoul Antupuesto. Honorable Jerome Deenghirang. As informed will be coming later, Mr. Chair. Honorable Francisco Bardón. Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara. Honorable Edgar Valera. Honorable Daniel Makaobos. Honorable Felicito Masagnay. Honorable Tomas Ceballo. Honorable Lorenzo Leon Gilbert, acting city mayor. Coro, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Secretary. What is the pleasure of the members of this August body with regards to the choosing of our temporary presiding officer? Honorable Pabio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all. I nominate as our temporary presiding officer on ninth regular session of it council, I, Consul Tara Rabat Gaita. I do so move.
Thank you so much, Honorable Pabio. There is a motion to nominate Honorable Tara Rabat Gaita as our temporary presiding officer for today's regular session. Julie seconded by Honorable Campos and all members present. Is there any objection? Hearing none, the motion is hereby approved. A few minutes recess is declared.
What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated August 19 and August 26, 2025 respectively, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. I would like to recognize on the floor Honorable Campos for the adoption of the two minutes of our regular session.
Madam Chair, I have here two minutes for two sessions first. Being the minutes for the August 19, 2025 for the seventh regular session of the eighth city council. The minutes have a total of 66 pages, the last line being the prayer. And for the 65th page, the last line numbered was line 22. And for the second minutes, Madam Chair, we have here the minutes for the August 26, 2025 or the eighth regular session of the eighth city council. There is a total of 52 pages and the last sentence line being line number two. If there are no objections and corrections to this, Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the two minutes of the eighth and seventh regular session. I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. So there is a motion by Honorable Campos for the adoption of the two previous minutes dated August 19 during the seventh regular session and August 26 during this council's eighth regular session. Any member to second her motion seconded by Honorable Bardón and all members present, any objections, discussions? Hearing none, the previous minutes is hereby adopted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For question hour, we invited Fire Senior Inspector Isabel Di Capigna, our new city fire marshal. However, Madam Chair, her staff informed me that she will attend the next session having a more important matter to be taken up. And for the other guest, we have here in session hall, Mr. Raoul Denis Dilarosa Castañeda and engineer Fidelito El Perpetua Junior of Domeral Construction and Supply together with the City Engineering's Project Inspectorate Team, engineer Marco Rime Mawalik, engineer Peter Giro Rodriguez, engineer Eduardo C. Purisima Junior, and engineer Jerry D. Antipolo per manifestation of Honorable Roger Pabio, Chairman of Committee on Public Works Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. In order for us to cater our guests this afternoon here in our session floor, may I request our Honorable Campos for the suspension of the house rules.
Madam Chair, to give way to our special guests that are invited from the Bureau of Fire Protection, the Domeral Construction and Supply, the City Engineering's Project Inspectorate of the LGU City of Mati, I move that the house rules of this August body be lifted, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. There is a motion for the, Honorable Campos, for the suspension of the house rules. So there is a motion for the suspension of the house rules as manifested by Honorable Campos. Any member to second her motion seconded by Honorable Masagnay. Any discussions, objections, hearing none, house rules are now suspended. Before we call in our session floor our guests, may I request, Mr. Secretary, to please read first the communication.
Engineer Fidelito El Perpetua Junior and Mr. Raoul Denis Dilarosa Castañeda. Sir, inasmuch as the Sanggudian try to understand your failure to attend, to accommodate their request for you to attend its August 26, 2025 regular session, the Honorable August body is reiterating its invitation for you to attend its regular session on September 1, 2025 at 2:00 PM at the City Council Session Hall, the city. Hoping therefore that this will merit your support and cooperation in the interest of public service. Thank you and God bless. Retruly yours, Secretary of Sanggudian, noted by our city, acting city vice mayor, Honorable Edmond Dupang Junior. And same concern, Madam Chair, we send informal communication to engineer Mawalik, engineer Rodriguez, engineer Purisima, and engineer Antipolo of the City Engineering's Project Inspectorate Team. Notice of invitation to attend regular session of the Sanggudian Pangungson. As per manifestation of Honorable Roelio Pabio, Chairman of Committee on Public Works Infrastructure, the Sanggudian invited the contractor of the SWD building, the Domeral Construction and Supply to attend its August 26 and rescheduled on September 1, 2025 regular session but failed to accommodate said request. However, the Honorable August body has reiterated its request for the said contractor to attend its September 1, 2025 regular session. Relative to this, the Sanggudian likewise would like to request your presence to its regular session on September 1, 2025 at 2:00 PM at the City Council Session Hall to find ways to resolve the issues reflected in your inspection report with the contractor to settle things out at our level. In the interest of public service, we will appreciate it very much if you could spare your time with the city legislator for its resolution. Thank you and more power and God bless. Retruly yours, Secretary of Sanggudian Pangungson. Signed by the acting city vice mayor, Honorable Edmond Dupang Junior. Our guests are now in the session hall, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. But before we call our guests in the session floor, may I first request our Honorable Roger Pabio to shed us a light as to why we call the attention of the Domeral Construction and Supply. Honorable Pabio, you may now have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, my respect to the eighth council and also to the, to those who are here and the visitors invited from the city engineering office and also the contractors. Madam Presiding Officer, I would like to give a short explanation why they invited this ninth regular session, the contractor of the said project. Because last August 19, I received an inspection report from the city engineering office signed by engineer Mar Mawalik, signed by engineer Eduardo Purisima, and signed by engineer Jerry Antipolo and engineer Peter Rodriguez not signed. So, Madam Presiding Officer, upon receive this inspection report, I need to call the attention the involved contractors so that the constituents, the matinyangs, they know what is the status about this report. So, Madam Presiding Officer, allow me to read the report of the city engineering.
Go ahead, Honorable Pabio.
The report is dated on inspection August 15, 2025. Project title, completion of CSWD office building. Project location, City Hall compound, Nazarino Street, Barangay Central, City of Mati. Name of contractor, Domeral Construction and Supply. Contract amount, 9,989,684.91. Date started, December 26, 2024. Target date of completion, September 21, 2025. Project status, ongoing. Physical accomplishment, scheduled progress, 86%. Actual, 100%. Slippage, 14%. Findings. No proper drainage of water waste on the flooring at the mail comfort room. Second floor, Joto improperly label floor tiles and floor drain. Number two, the wiring inside the panel board is improperly arranged. Number three, no proper looping of feeder wire at panel board. Number four, no complete level of circuit line in every circuit breaker at panel board. Number five, no electrical plant as busy during site inspection. Number six, no convenience outlet cover. Number seven, no complete lighting installation. Number eight, the panel board has an unprotected sharp edge that may compromise the integrity of the wires. Insulation potentially leading to conductor exposure. Number nine, scrubbers and debress are present inside the panel board. Number 10, exposed wire conduit and unsecured panel board present at a potential risk of electrical hazard. Number 11, the insulation of electrical wire, wiring in the electrical roof at the ground floor is improper and unsheeped as per PEC and safety standard. Number 12, the main service conductor lacks a proper looping creating the potential for rainwater and release along the cable path toward the meter box. That's why this, upon receive this report as a chairman of the Public Works and Infrastructure, I want to invite the contractor, the name, Mr. Raoul Denis Dilarosa Castañeda and the engineer Fidelito Perpetua Junior. I don't make a explain sila sa ilapong side, Madam Presiding Officer. I know that the funding is from the taxes nagibayan sa mga katawan. Dapat lapod mahiballo sila nga ang ilahang taxes nga matrabaho sa tama nga pagtrabaho kay ihaguan puna nila para makabayad ang taxes sa City of Mati. That's all, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Pabio, for shedding a light as to the rationale as to why we call the attention of the Domeral Construction and Supply. So the floor is now going to welcome our guests, engineer Perpetua or Mr. Castañeda, who may, you may now have the floor. So that you can also give your comments and your statement on the findings of the city engineering's office on their inspection. Engineer Perpetua, you now have the floor.
Good afternoon to each and everyone. Ah, pwede ba nga magbisaya nalang ko?
Go ahead, engineer.
Okay, thank you. Ah, para matagaan ang justification tong mga comments. At first, nagcontemplate me ni Sir Denis, ako ang boss. nga delay na mung appeal kay anyway, amo namanggi trabaho. Kuya, ang katung number one, kung sa binisaya una to ang historia, tiles lang tong wala na label na unload siya. Ang reason is during katung naghimo pami, nagconduct mung ditug inspection ang taga DSWD, kung ano sa na daw sila nakapuyu. Atong mga time, naputuy ang tiles ato is freshly, fresh pa kaayo. Kana ang bagupugin siya gibutang ba, natamak-tama kanila. So, motong malubong ditu-dabita magpundo ang tubig, maulang to siya. And, pa katutanan giaddress na, okay na siya karoon sa gadoon panato. Then, second, ah, under rest, ang tanan mga comments ana, as far as I'm concerned, purus electrical. So kanak siya, ginagmay lang puna siya, and most of it, kanang dilip na to ma-finalize tungod kay una, wala pati as build plan. Nagmag-submit pami o gas build plan. Then, ang katung mga labeling tanan, pag mabutang na to sa as build plan, then sakapanam to ilabel o isa-isa. Then, ang kanang uban, naman siya mga points diha nga katung mga wala na konformana. Ah, mind you, nga ang kaning amo ang project is sa second floor lang siya. Second floor, kasagaran diha, katung sa ground floor. Ang katung sa ground floor, wala na to kalabutan sa amo ang contract as of this kuwan kay existing man to siya. Delay may pwede manghilabot ato, oldo, ning connect me ditu akay na ditu ang main panel board. Pero, delay gapo may pwede manghilabot kay, kato siya, bisag dumira to sa una pang panahon. Pero, sa pagkakaroon, gi-touch na to daghan kayo mga kamot sa engineering pod ka na mga kuwan nila, kanang ilahang mga electricians. So delay may pwede patakao diho kilabot kay delay to amo ang. And kung napuy gamay problema, pweder man may magtinawag kay unta. nga sayo nung man tawagan kay anytime tawagan galiko nila, misi gabi indako. Nganong di ko makatawag, u, kanak lang. Kuya, ah, ang iadpo na kudeha, nga kanang ang project na ingunana na siya ang forma tungod na sa pakiusap sa una sa atong former mayor. Kay delay manggudunta na siya kompleto pa, daghan pa kayo na siya kulang. Tapos, ningingun man siya nga komplituhin muna lang kay basig kuwan, mapangitan lag pa maagi puhon. Ang amount sa kulang unta ni anak, eh daghan pa kayo wala nabutang kanang mga handrails, mga daghan pa kayo, tapos daghan po mga request diha si kanang ato sa DSWDO si Madam Maybel, Maybel no?
Maybel.
Oh, nagrequest siya diha o additional mga toilet kuwan, facilities, mga kuwan, daghan pa kayo. So amo na lang putong gi-cater, nagamount to siya almost, happy to 1,000,952. Purus sige na lang, ah, nagdecide si Sir Denis nga, ah, kanitanan, kaning amo ang mga, ah, almost na sa mga 951,000 kapin. Pwede na namun na siya iwait, amo na na ning hatag for free kay kompleto naman jod, wala naman tay mabuhat anak. Tapos, gi-ask na ko sila sa una kung mabayaran pa benidi, man sila munubag. So, adi na lang, hatag na na siya libre sa mga tao sa Mati. Kanak lang.
Thank you, engineer Perpetua. Engineer Perpetua, so the floor is now open for any questions to be addressed to our guests. Either Mr. Castañeda or engineer Perpetua can answer the queries of our Sanggudian members. So, before I call, kung kin sama na ay gusto ng mga questions, I would like to remind every member of this council of our 10-minute rule and also would like to remind everybody to please go directly to your question para ma-answer ang direkta po sa atong mga guests this afternoon. So, the floor is now open for any discussion or questions. Honorable Antupeso, you may now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to all of you. Ang akong pangutana sa toang guest karoon, is very simple lang kayo. I really understand the situation that the local government wala pa'y full control sa mga project because akong pangutana na turnover na ba ni engineer, wala pa? Na turnover na? Ah, nagpost, nagbill na mo in final billing?
Engineer Perpetua, you can...
Ah, sir, kinisya nga building before pa July 23. Gi-turnover na ni na mo, in fact, kung atong tanahon, dugay na sila nagpuyu ditu.
Okay.
Nagpuyu na sila, then, motong nga na sila ginagmay mga kuwan. Na turnover na na siya, kuya, pag bahel po niya ng pagturnover, nagfile po mi o kanang billing na wala pa mina kuwan, wala po na attend, huntod karoon.
Wala na attend it because of that inspection.
Okay, na apa daw kuwan, so wala pa ko kay balu until murag mga August. Nakadawat ko uka ng letter po, gikan sa PEO nga, wala pa daw kay kanang napay mga gamay mga inspection, pero before that, nag-inspection na po me dituha kay address potong naa sila mga ginagmay comments, pagtuon ako wala na, kay okay naman to mga upat lang man to comments.
Sir, iputlota ka, how come nga nagturnover then after ginawat sa city government without that findings?
Wala na na siya, sir.
Wala na, so diretsa-diretsa na?
Di kay kuwan man sir, bale, paghatag nila, among gi-turnover, delay na magitila eager na magi-sila gusto na sila mapuyu. Di, motong nga namuyu sila, niya, gi-turnover na na ko sa ilaha.
Pero that's a turnover si illegal because wala may, ang findings na to karoon, na day mga kulang, kuya, gi-turnover. Who accept the turnover?
Kinisya, sir, wala pa mina tagaan uka ng, ah, turnover certificate.
So therefore, wala pa na turnover na?
Motong wala pa mina bayran, pero amo na siyang gi-turnover sa ilaha, with comments only. Kay kinisya, sir, kininga comments taken right after the turnover man, sir. Kay ingunan ni man gudang proper na procedure ano, sir, sa mga projects lang. Bale, pag mahumanan na mo, amo na siyang ioffer for final inspection and turnover.
Yes.
Pag mayingon sila nga, okay, then, pwede na, niya mamuyu na dayon sila. Then, after ano, sir, pag magfile na mi o billing, magissue sila sa mga, ah, certificate of turnover kay support ditu sa katung kuwan, ana.
Super certificate of turnovers, ang akong pangutana, naabay certification nga na turnover na dawat?
Wala pa, sir.
So therefore, it's illegal giapon. Wala giapon kay wish on the... Wala di diha po, kay wish on the documents. Now, therefore, is, wala di na siya maturnover. Kaya wala man type of business, nga turnover accepted by the government, niage sa inspections, engineering. Whilst nga kining project i-turnover, it should be passed in the inspection from the engineer. Now, therefore, the engineer should give a recommendation. It's either this company project was already completed. Now, therefore, where is the recommendation of the city engineers na aba?
Wala pa, sir.
So, wala di siya maturnover?
User, pero ako pong question kay, ano na muyok namang po sila dayon?
Yes.
June, June pagod na. Kung mayingon po sila nga na dayon eh, then right at that moment, amon na dayon gi-address.
Pero, pagpuyok na po man, kapo pa may full control, kadi dilim man inyo pwedeng pasudlan kay kinala pagturnover, ganong gitugutan man inyo?
Kay gusto namang gi-sila, sir.
Inanalang dayo nga to sa gubert na?
Ingunan ano, manilang pamaagi, sir, di man juto ka ingon na dilim.
Ah, sige, inanig diha ng ato pamaagi, so now we will correct that, no? This, we will start here, no? So, say mong gi-ingon, ihatag nalang ni mo, in what reason? You are spending much money for that, but imo na ihatag sa syudad sa onray, o sa guyu gibuk aton. Uh, para di nalang mo guk don, para di nalang mo i-question. What is, what is the real reason?
Ingunan ni gus, sir, nagdiscuss me ni Sir Dennis sa tinood lang, ingunan ni gus ang pinaka tinood.
Sige, sir, sorry, ulay, ulay kwan, sir, pano, tabangan po po naman mo.
Bale, ang nagrequest tungod sa moa, nga trabaho uneh, nga trabaho unalang mga kulang-kulang, si Mayor Michelle niya to, then karoon, sir, kay si Mayor Mayo naman. So, nagto good me nga, basik dilim na mabayaran, although, gusto po may mungobra tungod sa ton lang kay nine hundred fifty-one thousand good ni.
Yes.
Pero, kung dilim na jod, sige nalang.
Na ba kadali, you are accepting more report or basik may mga violation kayo nagawad jan, it might be the ground for cancellation of your permits or of license?
Maka ingon dito sayo, sir, nga wala.
Wala diyan.
Wala.
So, bakit hindi ka magpabayad?
Kung bayaran me, sir, musugot jod me. Claro lang jod kay kwarta good ni.
Yes.
Pero, amo nga, di nalang kay, kung basik nga, sige na.
Kana ba nga building katung naigibasa ni kuwan nga, na ibili nga, wala munagak kuwan sa mga electrical?
No mona siya, sir.
Pag tingover no, do you have an electrical plan?
Uh, na, sir, na electrical.
Sign the electrical plan?
Ang electrical plan nga monggi sunduk, sir, is naman dria, natung sa pagbid.
Okay.
Na may gi, tong gamit na mo sa pag, sa bidding, naman ilaha maning plan.
Kuya, during the implementation of the project na tuman ang electric plan, wala?
Na ay, ay maka ingon ko, sir, nga, wala na natuman. Pero, dilim gi-dang circuiting, circuiting guring importante, sir. Ang, ang wala na tuman ang isang lighting slang, ugang air condition.
Okay.
Kay, ang lightings, uh, dapat gamay lang. Kuya, kay mo ingon man si Ma'am Maybel na kanang murag dilim na siya hayag dria, dungagam pa rin na tugkuan, niya madu napod dito kay mayor. So, amon na pong ilisan, wabut napod sa silong, bis kay wala na to kalabutan dito ah. Mo ingon namang po siya nga, ilisan lang ni mga suga kay hinihina man maniga.
During that time, sir, wala ba mo nag-coordinate sa engineering? Because mayor and engineering, the engineering is the in charge of the construction of our building. Why you are already referring to the mayor? Who is the person instructed you to refer to the mayor? I will, in fact, we have an engineering department.
Sir, nag-coordinate me si engineering.
And then, what's dari so the engineering?
Mayingon man ang engineering, sir, nga, sige, kung pwede pamakanan inyo ma cater, mung nga pwede man, sir, pero nalagini murag cost, kapal mo mga kasi namang gini mga cost. Kuya, sige lang kay pangitan na pumagin niya kay para dinilam usamuk si Ma'am Maybel, so kami thinking na mabayaran, putak kay simpe nagtrabaho buka. Di trabaho po dayon me, kuya kay, kawagakaroon.
Sige, we understand you as contractor. So, siguro na ay kita wag na to, uh, mga lapses ni ini with your coordination. Murag na may mga direkta, na may mga inani, so what happen now? Uh, is that building, kung ugaling di na mo magpabayad, kuya, wapuy proper turnover? Legal ba nga pakuyan or i-gamitin sa atong City Government? nga will impact the safety or whatsoever the safety security measure in, na installed on that building? Especially nga kanasya na puyan jod o mga taga tao, naapa ba ang safety diha?
Uh, ako, sir, sa kuwan lang, ako lang experience experience, sir, ha? Karasya nga building, sir, actually is livable na ginasya. In fact, na payo na sila for about two months na kapin.
Okay.
Then, ang kuwan na gida, sir, kining sa, kung mapansin mo, sir, sa stra, sa civil o architectural, isa lang majorang comment, katulang sa CR. Then after that, it is corrected already, so I assume na okay na to siya. Uh, ang, ang the rest is sa electrical, kining sa mga electrical, sir. Kung imojong basahon ok mayo, ang mga wire lang daw, wala na nga kuwan.
Pero, you have a contract on this?
Na apoy contract, sir.
So, if we have a contract, we should, we should follow the contract. Now, therefore, I, I consider this, this building is under, is under pa sa inyo. Kay wala pa man na to good, wala pa may formal gagan turnover. So, whatsoever, ang mahitabuo niya na nga building, so layabol ang contractor.
Unta gi-dunta, sir, ano ga gi-dunta kay sa amo pong uban mga project, sir, not only from here, sa labas po. Bisag, oh, napagdiya ikwan, sir, uh, kanang Espy Building sa Pak Sanggonyan Panglalawigan. Wala ginamunag ipasudlan, huntud karoon. Kay wala pa mina bayaran, kuya, wala pa na turnover.
Di gi po mo mabayran kay namay pinding po ng mga kuwan di ba?
Um, ingon sila, tapos, pag dria, dilim na jadi mga pugnan kay gusto namang jila mo occupy.
Kanang kuwan, sir, kanang finding karoon sa engineering, tinuoj na tanan?
Kining finding, sir, naman jod ni, tinuoj ni, oh, dilim joko mo dinay. Kay kanang natural mo ginousain, na hour ko siya na is crew na bilin, isa ka.
Normal di na, mas taas ako, sa akong research, mas taas pa daw mo sa quality sa inyong accomplishment compared to other, other contractor. So, na'y mga consideration, lo imampod mo nga, oh, sige nalang. But this time, gusto na to magiging patas ang council. nga dilim mo matiway, dilim po matiway ang atong guberno.
Salamat kayo, sir.
On saitan, awnimo, sa findings sa kining, last question, sa findings sa ning ihatag sa engineering? Tungod sa findings, di nalam mo magpabayad or on sa jod ang gustong mahitabuo niyo ano?
Dilim, sir, sa ako ng gi-kaiingon, ang nag, amo mong kung ka istorya jod before is si Mayor Michelle.
Yes.
Now, karoon, sir, if there is a chance na mabayaran me, kini na mga kuwan, why not? Nine hundred fifty-one thousand good ni. Pero, kung wala na jod, then, ang pinalantong amo ang kuwan, retention o katung na remaining na ten percent?
Ano ba jod nga, uga wala na jod, o sa mayroon, so, na tingala gugon inyo, if that building has no problem, why nga nun dilim man mo, mo insistes o pabayad?
Magpabayad gi-dunta me, sir. Kuya, kay mo ingon man dito nga, wala matay panding anak karoon.
So, bakit nagkaroon ng project nga, before we make that project, we should have the availability of fund?
Unta, sir.
Bakit nangyari yon? Before tayo magawa ng project, situit ng ating local government, may punto para jan. Eh, bakit gumawa kayo na walang punto, this illegal, ano? So, yun lang ang pinaka question, na intindihan ko kayo. Pero, how come after the findings, iwaip na niyo ang payment? So, unfair naman, barag mahimong maot ang mata sa atong loko, mamayad o kontrata. What if kung atong i-correct, maka beneficio ang City Government sa inyong construction and safe, and kayo po maka beneficio? So, katung recommendation lang, manluon na dayon mo?
Wala man minanluon, sir, pero kung kuwan mabayaran me, mas may jod kayo. Kay, kani, amo mo jod na gigastuhan, ihaguan pa jod.
Siguro ang engineering makatubagan ano?
Kana.
So, sige, sa, kung kanak lang sa, ang kung kush kawag naluuoy, mangko kumagunaon na businessman, mangguta. Pero, sa ingunan na lang na i-finding, mo iwaip na ta, so something wrong. Kung atong ipurso po, nga no di na to ipurso kung nagsumay mangkatas sa insaktong procedure. Mas i ang ako seto it to the review, ano? Mas i siguro, naaputay mga hukos-pokus, nga inanamunang di nalang takay, bago naman ang adminisayon.
Dilim, sir. Ako, sir, maka ingon dito sayo, sir, one hundred percent, wala jod me nagbinuwang. Kay, kani, among negusyo sa dilim ni fly by night, na jod me mga lisensya.
Kamu gi nagbuhat anak?
Kami jod.
Nakisubcontract? Wala, wala tao nga, gigamit lang ang inyong lisensya para buhat kamu jod?
Wala, sir, na amo dito diha kadado, pwede galiko nila picturan.
Sure, sige, kanalang ang akong kuwan, will impact, siguro ginato, wala pa may ipagawa sa City, wala pa jod mo nakakuwag payment na na?
Nakakuha me, sir, up to ninety percent.
A ninety, ten percent dala na bilin?
Ten ugang retention, mga two million po dapit, dapu giapod.
Dapu giapod, pero dapu giapod na osik sa atong City, kay nakakuha naman mo. So, ato di ng ipadayon, naturally nga, i-withdraw na lang na to kay na i-finding. So, ipadayon kay nine, nakakuha naman demong ninety percent. So, we will go deeper on the investigation on that kind of construction. Dahil this, pera ng taong bayan man yan.
Yes, sir.
Mas malaki naman ang nakuha niyo kay sa inyong iwaip, di ba? So, kanak lang, uh, siguro sa sunod ng interrogation, mas i makatubag ang engineering ano. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Anto Pesto. So, uh, based on their discussions, na ay mga question that only our engineering office can also shed a light to it. Maybe we can request, uh, any representative from our City Engineering Office, uh, inspection team. Engineer Antipolo, you may now have the floor.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, the August body, good afternoon. Uh, may I uh, discuss first, Madam Chair, regarding the process of the billing sa project?
Yes, you may go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, uh, the contract commencement, as with the DPWH, the, or NOAA contracting signing, an NTP notice to proceed, initiate the project. We design provision for an optional advance payment up to fifteen percent of the project. Number two, progress billing. The contractor files a request through City Engineers' Office attaching the SWA. Uh, certificate of payment, test report, photos, after CEO validation, documents are endorsed to the City Budget Office, then routed through the City Accounting Office, the City Treasurers Office, finally approved by the City Mayor. Then deduction, advance payment, retention, ten percent until fifty percent completion. And applicable taxes are applied. Then, the number three is final billing. Upon substantially completion, the CEO, City Engineers' Office headed by the inspectorate team will conduct the final inspection of the issuance of funds list. As approval or approval, rather, the contractor submits final billing with as well plans, clearances, supporting, documents routed through same offices for processing. I-discuss na ako, Madam Chair, regarding this final billing. Kay karoon nga administration, uh, sa una, wala'y, wala'y final inspectorate team. Diretso lang mo final, uh, karoon, nagcompose me karoon o final inspectorate team uh, with a composition of kuwan, later on, i-discuss na on ya ni Engineer Peter Rodriguez. Then, the number four, the turnover and the final acceptance. Final inspection is conducted, turnover documents are submitted, the final acceptance is issued. Retention money is released upon acceptance or earlier is allowed, if allowed, through a validate guarantee. Then, uh, mauna ang processing sa, kung na ay kontrata within the contractor and the City Engineers' Office regarding that, uh, regarding sa mga deficiencies, natural siya, Madam Chair, nga naa siya i-finding. Then after sa findings, rectify sa maong contractor, usa sila bayaran. Ingana ang sistema. So, ikaduha, uh, ang katung turnover, wala pa siya actually the formal turnover. Sa past administration manggod, gi-phil, gi, puyan na nila kay tungod isugot po ng maong contractor. Kami atong nga tay manggood, Madam Chair, wala manggood me sa City Engineers' Office, kaming upat. So, karoon, nag, na sa turnover, wala pa gitu siya maturnover, actually, kay napaman sila i-final, wala pa man nila nakulikta, siguro na turnover katung phase one. No? So, kung naabani siya face to, wala gi siya final turnover dito sa completion of that project, kanang astructure. And then, ikaduha, wala pa gi siya acceptance, wala pa'y turnover, wala pa'y acceptance. Then, regarding po sa findings, in addition sa istorya ganina, uh, na ay nakita dito ang in, in, engineering works, sa civil works, katulay isa. Pero, na siya mga minor, kay nakasabutan namo ni Engineer Mark Perpetua nga, mga minor lang. Wala na na mo gibutang, there is a findings. The rest of the findings, eleven findings regarding na siya sa electrical. So, yes, Madam Chair, can I call Engineer Peter Rodriguez to discuss regarding the deficiencies and findings of electrical?
Noted, Engineer Antipolo, Engineer Rodriguez, you may now have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. To this, uh, member of this August body, City Council, good afternoon. To the visitors in this hall, good afternoon. Uh, with regards to the findings of the electrical, first, I would like to shed light everything. The one first, the discuss of the contractor na, to previous wala gi nila ma-kuwan, gi ang, to attain the older documents kay sa start palang daan, to evaluation of the electrical is concerned, dilim di siya kompletu ang, ang plano. Although, nakita na ako, Madam Chair, ang POW lang, without the electrical plan. So, that's why, ni, ni, ni come up ko dito sa akong mga findings, kay what is the basis of the POW if wala tay, wala tang, uh, electrical plan? Same with the phase one, the construction, and the phase two, wala gi abo si mga parameters of the electrical plan. So, that's why, katung ang findings ako, wala kuy basis sa plano to inspection. Uh, as far as sa Engineer, uh, Jong, na ingo siya kanina na ang ground floor sa phase one, tinood na siya, pero, wala gi na siya, wala gi, ang problema diha kay wala manguy saktong plano. Up the start of the planning stage pa, Madam Chair, wala gi say, wala gi tay saktong hatag na plano. In fairness po sa contractor, wala sila basis. So, when I check the torrid documents, wala gi, wala gi siya electrical plan. So, motong pag completion aning building karoon, ang majority of the findings is more on electrical. Kay, I want to give you the highlights, Madam Chair. The, the height of the building is electrical. Kanang la na, kuha na to ang tanan, uh, expect sa, sa building, like example po the air conditioning system para makuha na to ang load condition sa building. Mauna, wala, sa pagcheck na ko, wala gi siya load computation, load schedule, load computation, single line diagram. Mauna mga parameters sa, sa electrical plan that need to be provide. As far as, uh, DILG memorandum circular number, memo, uh, memo circular of DILG twenty zero six, twenty sixteen dash twenty-three. Appeal Penical Code Article one point three point two point one. This should be provide as the following, design analysis all the aspect appeal Penical Code is concerned. So, wala gi na siya na maprobide, Madam Chair, only the POW. So, mauna tong, naghatag ko o recommendation na, we should have to provide additional testing para bago ta mag-assume anang building. To, papa may balan na to ang strength and sa resistance sa mga cables to perform the test, testing, electrical testing. That's my observation, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Engineer Rodriguez, for also shedding the light and also giving us your professional opinion on the findings that you have presented here in your report. Um, any members who would still like to question our, any of our guests, I would like to recognize again on the floor, Honorable Pabio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Pangutana lang ko sa engineering, kung ang usa ka contractor, alaon ba sila na, adonay variation? Variation?
Can I give to the floor too?
Any member from the Engineering's Office can answer the query, Honorable Pabio.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, regarding atong na-discuss, uh, tama, na-discuss kanina katung nine hundred fifty-one thousand, na dilim na sila pabayan. Excuse, variation?
Excuse, variation order tus ya? Nagistorya ganina si Honorable Antupesto, nga nung di man mo bayaran, nga ni Gusan timan mo, wala it permiso, nga gihatag siguro, kung sa proseso manggood unta, Madam Chair, usak ka mag-implement ini variation, extra work order, kay wala man dito na ka-indicate sa maong plano, manang hitsa sa engineering, ng ag butang namu ni udili, unless, wala, wala git siya, di git sila mabayaran, kay wala may, wala may paper, wala may paper trail nga yung agi, wala may, wala may approval by the City Engineers Office nga mag- mag-install sila anang kuwan, extra work order na gi-tawag anak, kay wala man dito na appeal sa kuwan, ini variation order kung wala pa'y approve. So dilig gitu ingon nga matawag nga budgeted tus ya? Budgeted? Katung lang, within the scope of work lang sa contract. That's it? Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, kayo. So, pasabotong 900 plus, nga wala pa mabayri, within the budget of 9 million kay, correct me if I'm wrong, kibali variation to ilang itarbaho?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, next, Honorable Presiding Officer. So, nagbutangka building, wala'y plano sa electrical, mahibalotang ang opisina na, naay computer, naay aircon, dilig ba diligado masunog ang City Hall?
Good afternoon. Lindut kay ano na pangutan na, sir. As electrical is concerned, sir, maubito ng bago ta mag-design stage, pangwaon ya'to na ng mga parameters, like the load of the air conditioning system, para to come up, kung sakto ba ato ang proper loading and sizing of the cables. So sa kanak karoon kay, wala manggood kayo yung hataag na data. So that's why, nag-recommend ko o Asbel plan, signed by the engineer of the contractor, based on the actual sa project, Your Honor. Then I have also a recommendation na mag-perform yutao isolation resistant test, para mahibalan kung sakto bagyo't ang ilahang proper loading sa kuwan.
So for the record, Honorable Presiding Officer, pasabot ang contractor nagbutang o electrical na without permission?
Actually, Your Honor, at the start unta sa pagkuwan sa construction, dapat naatay building permit, electrical permit.
Yes. Why nagstart ang construction wala electrical building permit?
Kana, Your Honor, kung ako'y mo pakuan ang paistoriyon, ang makatubaga na ang katung previous.
Allow me to butt in first in your discussion. As is that question, we can directly question that to the contractor themselves. May Engineer Perpetua answer the query of Honorable Papio. You may now have the floor, Engineer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sir, pag sugod yun na mo ano sir, nag sugod na me sa mga building, natural basta mabuhos na ka, mangayay man di ko permissyon, kay ang kaling sa mga electrical lagi, kay buhos ay lalom, mag tiles ka, butang ang mga kuwan. So nangayay me sa ilahang plan, wala po dingon na wala may permissyon, na diyod may permissyon. Unya, kita gaan mo nila o plan nga kanang diha sa second floor, since second floor malangamo ang kuwan. At that time, wala pa si Engineer Rodriguez dito ah, o si sila, wala pa. Pero, oh, si Engineer Antipolo wala po, kay basta wala na sila, tapos ang naatong at time, kana lang sila si, si, dilip pa, atong isa si, si, atong si Junil? Oh, si Engineer Nombrado, o si Engineer Sako, sa ilahang di mo mang inquire, hugun sa pay mga kuwan diha, kay dilim mo pwede magpatakat takik butang, dugay man maning kuwan, kaling sa mga buildings dapat kuwan junisia. Kita gaan mo nila atong plan, pero I believe na katunga plan, mauna daw to siya, pero nilig gitu siya approve. Since po na nagdali git sila pag mayay git kay gusto na diyod lapuyan. So, nimprosid diyod me ni ato na plan, anyway, nag-ingon man sila, nga dilig lang tamang kuwan kay pag Asbuild, maghimo mo kita, i-indicate man diyod na tanan-tanan, so karoon naghimo diyod me siya o Asbuild plan, basi po dito. In fact, na ina nga utro po diha nga katung sa ilang original, ang aircon from six, na himong four, pero nindako anak. Basta na-indicate na cadi tuh, sa gihimo ano mo Asbuild plan, nya, permaan po namo.
Thank you for shedding the light.
Madam Presiding Officer, I ask to the engineer, the domeral construction supply, what type construction? Type A, type B, type C, triple A?
Your Honor.
Eh? As contractor, type A, pwede di ka mag-start o construct building without planning electrical?
Your Honor, kini siya, sa ako ng gika ingon sa imo ha, ilaha mang nama ng engineering, hand in hand man me ni ini. Tapos, wala madilim man me pwede mag-proceed nga wala instruction gikan sa ilaha, kay otherwise dilig nila i-approved. So nagfollow diyod me sa ilaha.
Pero wala ba ka mahadlok nga mo implement, nga wala kay gugunitan prop of evidence nga approve ang electrical permit?
Ah, namanggugoy trust sa engineering, ah, Your Honor nga, since here po siya sa ilang panarabaho, kay at stake ko na ilang trabaho ni ini, dilig ko dingon nga kanang, kanang trabaho pagkauman wala na dayon, sila di, sila di gubayak, so ako nagsalik di ko sa ilaha, kay dilim mo gumagduda-duda kay, na, biya, sila diha na diyod.
Okay, guapo, guapo ng imong statement, na nagsalik ka sa ilaha, kana pwede sir lang maapray kung private building, pero government manis ya, subject for audit kay kwarta sa katauhan, nga gibaian, ubuhis nga to sa city government. Unya, you are doing, continue contracting the building, nagbutang mo electrical, watakay baloan na karoon asal na agi ng mga wires na? So, I, ah, may question addis to Engineer Rodriguez.
Go ahead, Engineer Rodriguez.
If the building may tabo masunog magcreate diha, unsay liability sa contractor?
Actually, Your Honor, ah, as far as I know, there's a liability po the, ah, the engineers 15 years sa among signatories. That's why, naubito ng sa among team karoon, ah, nagkatoro, check yudko, di na ko sa physical, and also the documents. Kay ma'to ni come up, ganika karoon, nakita na mo na, unta kanina matatawag ang previous ah, engineers na handle ani kay, in fairness po, kung na, nagami, na kuwan lang yun misa una, kanina guntap ma, ma hansa, ma hans, hanay mountain iantanan.
As you're electrical engineer of City of Government, City of Government to Mati, moke ka nga yas build na, nga waka kay balo kung asa ibulusot ang mga wires, mo perma ka?
No, in Asbel, Your Honor, dito ni mo ma-replex, kung tama ba o dilig. Maubito kung na ako'y gitess procedure as electrical engineer, professional electrical engineer, naan me procedure, kung sakto ba ilang installation sa electrical?
What do you mean, bakbakwan, bakbakwan ng warning para makita na'to ang wires nagibutan?
Ah, Your Honor, namantay mga procedure how, how the testing o kung sakto ba ang mga wiring sizing kung na kuanya. Ang circuiting, ang circuiting ano, Your Honor, makita po na'to kung naabasi, kung ang sakto ba eh ang proper wire sizing.
Okay.
Pagtest na'to dito makita, maubito tong sakwa ang findings to perform test load, para to identify. Kaya ako po, Your Honor, di po na ako isugal ang akong signature.
Yan, that's why I ask na, you're a licensed electrical engineer, unya kung mag-asbuild ka, without knowing kung unsaka dako ang gibutan nga mga wires dito sa lalom sa flooring, o dito ba sa warning, unya, mo perma katungor kay the words Asbel?
Your Honor, if you're a LEAP, ang tawag sa mo LEAP, Licensed Electrical Practitioner, ma-identify na ni mo, Your Honor, if you're a practicing electrical engineer.
Okay, so the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure, so, bottom record, the ball is on the engineering office, so for the Asbel na atong is, atong isugot ang karoon, pertaining niya ng second floor sa CSWDO, thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Your Honor, in addition, can I, in addition, for Your Honor, siguro, dilig lang kanina mga project na atong matutukan. Actually, sa daghan na list of projects sa previous, daghang yu kayo mga plano na, wala giun masunod ang parameters. Mauna ang gusto na unta na mo na magi, pagkaroon tao infra audit, and magtawagon po na'to tong previous engineers na gihimo ani. Kaya nahulog maguwan ni karoon kami ang, kami ang bottom line sa, nasalok sa mga problema ani. Para mo patubag po sa previous engineers na permaaning mga POW.
Thank you, Engineer Rodriguez. Honorable Presiding Officer, I hold ten others project na we have findings. Dilig lang na kayin you merit, later nalang, kay ikaw hapo na.
Noted on that, Honorable Papio, but, yes, go ahead, Honorable, ah, Engineer Rodriguez.
Before I utak kung mahatak mag, mag-assume na la sir sa building, situito tana, na unta ni electrical permit, building, electrical permit, certificate of final inspection and completion prior to assume sa building, unta malook out po unta ni sa Office of Building Officer. Kay one of the, kita ang regulatory, pero mismo kita, nasa tugkaran sa atong opisina, wala nila ma atimanatol. Akon ex- ex- para to ba, heads up lang your honor.
Thank you for that statement Engineer Rodriguez. Um, ma- mangutana lang ko pati baka niyang atong SP bag-una SP building na abani building permit sad.
Yes, dapat your honor. Private or government building should provide building permit.
Hmm. Based on the records as Mr. Secretary, um, shed a light as well. Wala bisag ang ato ang, um, bagong session hall building wala pod ni sakto pod ng mga permits. So that is also a lesson learned to all of us. Now it comes to any dealings with our government especially in the implementation of the project. Let us be truthful and let us also comply ang necessary important documents kay kwarta ni sa katauhan ang atong ginagamit for the construction and if on any government building. So, uh, any member who would still like to question? May I first recognize Honorable, um, Cap Danny Makaubos followed by Honorable Valera and followed by Honorable Anto Presto.
Thank you Madam Chair, uh, to my colleagues, to all visitors who are now in attendance to this session. Actually, I would like to extend my thanks to all the guests for enlightening all- all of us with regards to the- to the problem that we have. Actually, uh, this might, this is the right time for us to pass a legislative measures in this honorable council para maprotektahan nato ang mga parehasan ng mga pangitabo. Actually, as I come to read with the twelve listed items in the findings of the inspectorate, city inspectorate team. Only one goes to the drainage system and eleven goes to the electrical. Uh, as mentioned by the engineer of the contractor, wala'y electrical plan. Uh, as I also graduate of civil engineering, may I know from the engineer of the contractor, kung unsa business sa inyuan pagcontract, nawala man mo hinakita unsa trabahoon. That is my question. Uh, there is a program of works pero wala'y plano unsa inyuan paghimoon. Where did the amount came from? When it comes to labor wherein wala may approved electrical plan. So, kanan nga akong pangutana, for us, wala medere para imbestigahan mo, silutan mo. We are here in a double legislation. Para gusto na mo makita unsa giun mga pangitabo. Kay for me, ngano mang tratan ko, wala ko say trabahoon. You have provided me wires, outlets pero unsa una ko na siya. Asa na ako na siya butang. For me, I am not a, I just want to know from the contractor, giun sa na inyuan pagdawat nawala may specified nga unsa ang trabahoon. The only appears as what you have said is the POW. Ugitodloan lang mo mauna mauna. Just come to remember always. Ngay, ang historia will never stand in any legal battle. It can't be denied. So, gikinahang lang yud nga na ay patil ng ato ang pagasundon. Like for example, religion, pag wala'y biblia, wala kay dapat sundan. So, kanan ang gusto na akong mahitabo, asa na gikan ang inyuan pagkumtrata. Where did you came up that in number of this ang electrical mahuman? Nawala may plano ang inyuan niya tanaw. So, kanan lang ako mga pangutana, but again, as a member of this nine city council, I'm very thankful that this, uh, forum shed lights to each and everyone of us to come up with a legislative measures para maprotektahan ang atong katauhan sa siudad sa Mati. Thank you.
Thank you Honorable Makaubos and I second your statement. Um, but I would like to give the floor first to our guests. Engineer Perpetua two, please answer the query of our, um, honorable member Honorable Makaubos.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, pagkadawat namo sa notice, kanang makita nato sa Phil Jepps, ang nakabutang is ABC. Then after, uh, na ay kanang ilapilang yang amount yud. Tapos ang mga scope of works appealed to. Makita namo na electrical lang ang wala'y plan. So, before me nagproceed sa amua ang bidding, anyway, na naman yud siya tanan plan except for the electrical. Na ayay umi sa ilahang nga kuwan, dres sa nga inko nga. Unsa una mo anipag estimate sa electrical nga wala pa man. So, naghatag sila sa amua o plan nga wala panasay. Pero salig ko kay gikan man sa ila. So, from that plan, dito na magestimate ang tanan. So, maumampud ang nahitabo, maumampud ang kuwan pero only nga wala na incorporate sa katungilahang gisa, gipa- magpalitman taog bidding documents, your honor, nga katung apil sa katungkuwan. Apil to samong napalit,apan wala lang na incorporate derya. Kanalang siya, your honor.
Thank you Engineer Perpetua. Do you have any member who would like to question? But before Honorable Anto Presto, I would like give the floor first to Honorable Valera.
Thank you Madam Beautiful Presiding Officer, ma'am. Uh, good afternoon my colleagues, members and all visitors. The invitation of our contractor, kung atong ipaminawan, ang iyahanga response sa atong mga pangutana. So, nakita man nato nga nakakoleksyon naman sila, correct? Nakakoleksyon naman sa inyuan project, first, second, final ang wala pa. So, tolerate na sa ato ang, uh, government na okay lang trabaho. So, kanan mangutana man ta sa ila. So, ang ato pong invite tagaengineering is not the right person. Kanan sila nga, delete sila katubag because delete sila ang dati ang naa diha nagbingkod. So, delete nato ma patubag. Kay kumagis go tag program of works, natrabaho man nila, therefore they have a program of works. Pero may ingon tag electrical plan, monay wala. You know, uh, this is a practice sa ato at sa city. Uh, my experience when I was sa punong barangay barangay science, my barangay hall, bali, piece one, piece two, piece three ang trabaho niya na. Piece one sa city, uh, budget. Second city pa din, ang budget. Then akong ipatiwas sa provincial government para mahuman. After pod na mahuman pod ang ako ang termino as a punong barangay. Naglistod ang probinsya kay delete nila makita ang plano sa electrical plan. Ambot ngano ni engineering nato, maging practice derye. Ngay, dun na tay monitoring pero dagan project from the highway or other government mga project. Nakita na ko ngano nakasiga ang sugat. Nawala'y mga permit sa building. Pero pag ang mga sibilian maglukad ng permit, dugay mapasigahan ang sugat. Pero ang government project, bisag wala building permit, nagasiga na. Eh, mga cupboard court din nasa amua, wala'y mga building permit pero tingala ka ngano makasugat na. Ang office of the women's building dito sa amo, wala na ko, wala ko ipirmano sa ask administration administrator. Kaya ako man ang kapitan. Pero nakasiga lagi ang building. So, monay na practice nato. So, karoon, I cannot blame to the contractor because the contractor kung tagaan mo nagproject, ginapas nila na, makaginansya sila, trabaho sila. But the all responsibilities na sa ato ang ahensya. Kung substandard ba or delete ba ma o. I think my understanding about, uh, variation is ang pag-usap. Pero mag-add on, ambot wala na ko kabalo niya na. Ang problema kanatod derya as belt yud, mukiperminti maulahi as belt plan, no? So, maybe kung delete na nato ma- mahuman, karoon. Ato invite ang katugyong previous ini, katugihingan lang kanina ng mga engineer nato. Tong, uh, nag-assign sa inspection, sa project engineer, sa electrical engineer. Sila giun magkatubag, delete pa man nato na sila ma question karoon si Sir Antipolo, sila si Sir Rodriguez. Kay wala sila atong panahon na. That's my observation, uh, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you Honorable Valera. Maybe we can do that on the, where you can request the committee chair on infrastructure and public works? We can refer that to the committee that you are concerned. Uh, would like to recognize first, um, Honorable Anto Presto followed by Honorable Campos.
Yes, thank you Madam Chair. Again, I collect all the defense from the engineering and from the contractor. Now I found out na, ang ang ako lang yud, kung nagtuman lang yud ta sa national building code of the Philippines. Once we start constructing a building, we should secure first the building permit. So, paano lalabas ang building permit? They should have a plan, electrical, plumbing, whatsoever. Bakit nagiging start na walang electrical permit? Now therefore, that's construction is illegal. So, we cannot recognize that not legally. So, minsan tapo sabi ng contractor, may- may electrical, then nagsoolti si Engineer Peter, wala. So, sino ba talaga kuya? So, now therefore, hindi ko napasagutin because dito na ako maniniwala sa nag-inspection, wala talaga ang building permit. So, this time siguro nakita nato, kini sila si, kin sa bag yud. Ang mga taong responsable during that construction, kay I think wala man. I think, may I request, uh, engineer, sino ba talaga sila? Kasi sila dapat ang managot. Just imagine, kung mga private person balik-balikan ta ni Engineer Banisa, balik-balikan ta ni Engineer Luon to secure all the building requirements. Sige pa taga balik-balikan, unya karoon kung public government building, magpiyong ang mga building official, magpiyong ang mga building engineer, then ang mga negosyante maglistod, pagkuha sila mga business permit because of that. Now, who is that person, Mister, uh, Mister Rodriguez? nga insured during the time the construction of this CSWDO building?
Uh, thank you, thank you very much, your honor. Actually, your honor, nagpag-turo na ako sa documents. Ang first, first phase, ang mas signaturis is Engineer Sako.
Engineer Sako.
Engineer Luon.
Engineer Luon.
Siya pa man ang UIC.
Yes.
First phase.
Yes.
Then the completion is same signaturis. Ang nagprepared sa- sa plano is Adrian Malintat.
Yes.
Engineering aid checked by Engineer Apale. Apale, Apale.
Apale.
And electrical is prepared by Engineer Troy Salasan. And same time Engineer Sako. And approved by the city engineers, Engineer Balani.
In your own opinion, this personalities because of the failure of the requiring, ano, that's a violation. Who is the responsible of this? This person responsible ba sila for this situation today? We found out.
Actually, your honor, no, in fairness pod, dapat ginunta. Mobi to tong pagastay sa kung Toroy checks sa mga documents. Sa designing stage palang daan, nanay problema.
Yes.
Then pag sa contractor side, unta pag bid nila, siyempre namu na sila electrical engineer. Dito sa pre bid nila, ilan na nang manifest? Ngano wala may electrical plan. So, that is the proper procedure, your honor.
Okay, so because of the situation, I heard before the statement of Engineer Perpect- Perpectua. Always refer to the mayor, 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 always referring to the mayor. Now therefore, this construction was not followed the- the standard in securing the building permit. He always followed the command of a certain person. That's why this is the reason.
Kanan natubag, your honor, siguro ang makatubakan atong mga previous engineer.
Yes, then may manifest to ano na siguro if we have a discussed time kitong mga concerned person because I believe hindi lang ito ang problema. Andami pang problema, even I think the city hall building has no certificate of occupancy. Which is the responsible ang magconduct ang engineering ang ubo. I think, yung pagoccupy ng CSWDO according to the contractor na nandoon na sila, bakit pinayagan? nga will impact, hindi pwedeng magtira ang is- magoccupy ang isang occupant occupants kung walang certificate of occupancy. Ako nga, hindi nga nakatira sa building ko dahil wala akong secure certificate of occupancy. Sine secured ko lahat, eh ngayon government property, nasa tugkaran nila, hindi nila kaya. Bakit ba? May substandard ba ang ating government? Kung private businessman, lalong-lalong hindi kaaliado, talagang bigyan nila lahat ng mga violation. Then ang guberno na nasa- nasa tugkaran rin nila, natulog ang atong ubo, natulog ang atong engineering. And now this is now time to shine. Time to shine or resign. Wala siya. Salamat sa engineering, delete tamo away yun, delete na ko sila away yun. This is now a time to correct and I would like to support the suggestion of Honorable Danny Makaubos to have a legislative measure regarding, is parandin na ni or manubag ang dapat manubag. Delete na nato siguro, toki on pakay na nataluoy na kayis na, napatid dagan business. Ang ako ng suggestion, support ko sa suggestion ni kagawad, ni Consial Makaubos. And then atong paimbestigahan o tawagon nato ang mga concerned personalities na ining talamak o irisponsableng pagtukod sa atong mga government building in the city. Kanalang, your honor.
Thank you Honorable Anto Presto and I strongly support your statement that this is high time now for us isip mga elected public official to also be vigilant when it comes sa mga public works and government infrastructures na gamit pod ang kwarta sa katauhan. So, kinahinanglan po na kita, we held those people na accountable pod, no? And maybe we can have one last, one more question. Considering now we have other guests from the different todas association here in our session hall so that we can also give, um, time pod para sa atong mga civil society organizations. So, the last question we'll now have will be coming from Honorable Campos. You may now have the floor.
Thank you Madam Chair, my questions are for any of the three of them. Anyway, uh, I would like to start with the requirements pa lang. Una sa tanan, magbidding ta, diba na ay plano, nga biddingan nato? Kin sa ang negosyante nga wala sa isip magbidding o gusak ang negosyo nga wakakabaloon sa iplano, unsa ang pagabuhaton o pila ang gastuhon o kung pila ang imuhang halinon. So, pagbidding pa lang, wala na day plano presented. Nalipog ko, kay mo ingon si sir na ay plano, mo ingon si engineer na wala'y plano. Pero ning ingon si engineer later on, nga na ay plano kasuwa mapirmahi. Kung wak mapirmahi, but basabot wak maapprove. Kung wak maapprove, but basabot illegal. Simple rakaayo. So, let me start first with this construction, Domerald Construction and Supply. Una sa tanan, we are talking about the CSWDO building karoon na karantamay right? Pero, delete lang ni karoon nahitabo nga tuig. Delete lang pod kani ang mga proyekto ni Domerald Construction Supply. Naluoy ko kanina kang sir, ning ingon siya nine hundred fifty one thousand, itiway na lang nako, ihatag na lang nako sa kwarta, ang kwarta para sa mga katauhan sa siudad sa Mati. Very generous, salamat sa donation. But, delete nato pwede tabunan ang ato ang mata sa mga kakahitabo sa pipila ka mga tuig. What are those? Year twenty twenty-two. Pagkoncrete sa dalan sa Don Luis, ten million ang budget. Kompleto na, year twenty twenty-two pa. Unsa refinding sa ato ang engineer ng mga bago. Ang dalan, ang cemento, ang pavement na ay mga agi sa mga tiil. Na ay problema ang mga dalan. Damage ang mga cover sa kanal. Broken ang mga section sa kanal. Na ay material deterioration. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, three years lang buak-buak na. Is this a sign of substandard na mga gamit na gipanggamit? Pero ten million na siya, Madam Chair. Number two, concreting roads sa CMEEC. Barangay Dahikan, fully paid, thirteen million. Kompleto na by Domerald Construction and Supply gehapon. Project length was shortened kay tungod daw sa environmental issues. Na ay mga pack marks ang cement o ang pavement. Ang mga pagpagahay sa cemento na ay mga spoils. Reflectorized pavement markings na ga fade na. Na ay mga cracks ang mga cemento. Uh, for me, two years palang gikan sa pagconstruction sa thirteen million na kwarta sa guberno. Daot-daot na karoon. Ikatulo, clearing embankment and road construction sa Barangay Dahikan. At onoffre property. Unsa ni siya, public ni siya or private? Anyway, kompleto na, nabaidan na, seven million. By Domerald Construction and Supply gehapon. Nautilize na sa barn. Number four, twenty twenty-three na na. So, every year na aday mga projects si Domerald Construction and Supply derya sa ato as a city LGU. Daganda eh kay ni siya projects derya. Additional construction sa FGR Park. Apil day ang Baywok under gehapon sa Domerald Construction. Mail comfort room is not functional. Daot ang CR. Isaraka closet sa comfort room sa babae ang magamit. Ang fountain o amphitheater delete functional. Completed, paid, seven million to Domerald Construction and Supply. Nakita inyo, katungma ginareklamo inyo nga problema derya sa ato ang siudad sa Mati. Nagagawas na karoon, kung pila ang gibayado, kin sa ang nagtrabaho. Landscaping construction sa Buso Hot Spring, pati ang CR. Nagareklamo ang tagabuso, delete magamit ko, no? Three million ang gigasto sa siudad sa Mati, dedy sa siudad katauhan sa siudad sa Mati. Erosion lining sa mga comfort room exterior walls. Wall integrity, very risky sa magamit, basina ay magamit sa comfort room matabunan. Ang landscaping damage from the sheer line. Basin sa sheer line. Kompleto na ang project, bayad na o three million pesos. Domerald Construction and Supply gehapon, Engineer Jong Perpetua gehapon. Completed, fully paid sa katauhan sa siudad sa Mati, delete yud magamit at all. Flood control, uy! Sa government center sa Barangay Luban. From Domerald Construction and Supply gehapon, one point four million, Engineer Kenneth Lumente. Significant growth of weeds sa sulod sa drainage. Puno o mga tanong, puno o weeds, wala gi katingan bago gibutang ang drainage. Na ay build up sa mga gravel, batu-batu debris sa sulod sa ilalom. Ang steel bars na ay hazard, hazardo, stilikado. Twenty twenty-four, kila man day ni katuig, di ay nga puro incompetent ang gipangbuhat. Di lang man day ni karoon si CSWD O, ratong historihan run. Completion of CSWD office, Barangay Central, ten million. Incomplete, wala'y lighting fixtures. Or delete, kompleto ang mga lighting fixtures, wala gi sunod ang naa sa plano. Ten million pesos by Domerald Construction and Supply Engineer Jong Perpetua. Establishment of muring buoy, kanan naglutaw-lutaw diya sa puhada. Five million pod i ay. Ongoing suspended kay tungod, nagprocess pa sa PAMB clearance. Seawall sa Baywok Ima, seven point seven million by Domerald Construction and Supply gehapon. Handlaying technique being implemented was not fully complied with the desired specification. Poor joints staggering. Linear alignment problema, na ay mga gap, nawala na fill. Gagmay ang mga stone o mga gravel, delete uniform ang tagilid, delete aligned ang structure. Sunod, tennis court, dres na sa reno. Cinco millones, Domerald Construction and Supply gehapon, Engineer Rosendo Linsag. Ground floor slab, wala na human. Wala na putlan ang mga puno na damage ang mga atop. Ang light fixtures, wala na install o tarong sa CR o sa liguanan. Stair nosing, grouting, wala na human. Ang hagdan na ay railings pero delete align. Oh, sa kabugunit. Urinal sink, wala pa mainstall, two thousand twenty-four, fully paid, way ihihanan. Ramps with railings, both the male and female, not in place. Wak pamabutang, sige. Twenty twenty-five, seventeen ka solar light, Barangay Don Salvador, one million pesos. Ongoing, panuan ni siya, subject for final inspection. All seventeen solar lights, okay as of now. Kaso, eleven ka solar powered streetlights were reported na delete functional. Kasayang, one million naapod sa Barangay Macambol, seventeen ka solar paneled lights. Sa seventeen kabuo, one million ang nagastos. Eleven kabuo ang delete mugana. May pang mga bumbilya sa balay sa mga kabos, no? Tagwarin tara, mangandar man? Karing tag one million, di nanuwa mangandar. Installation of seventeen unit solar lights, Barangay Libo Don. For final inspection, pero as of now defective na ang duha. One of the streetlights, tagilid. Misalignment and wala na.
Point of order, Honorable Campos. Uh, earlier before we started to cater our guests, I emphasize already that we will go straight to our question at hand.
Yes, madam.
And the matter here is only pertaining to the CSWDO. And I truly understand. And I also agree with your statement, maybe those concerned, we can lobby it down to the committee level para kanan ng mga programs that you have mentioned earlier can be addressed in the committee level. And our committee, um, on public works and infrastructure can also give us the report as pertaining to those, um, public works and government infrastructures, um, now as you have mentioned. So, maybe I can, um, request from you that can we focus on the matter at hand?
On the CSWDO, Madam Chair.
The CSWDO building.
I will use up my two minutes remaining, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Honorable Campos.
So, first and foremost, fifteen kabuo, itotal na lang ako fifteen ang proyekto ni sir sa iyahang Domerald Construction Ong Supply derya sa Mati City. Pinakauna pa lang ni, nga ato ang gibusisi. Again, mangutana ko balik, kin sa ba ang responsible sa paghatag o komplisyon papers ni ini? Kay completed naman daw ang CSWDO, if anybody from the engineering office can answer?
The floor is now yours, Engineer Antipolo. You may now, uh, answer the query of Honorable Campos.
Yes, good afternoon again. Uh, Madam Chair, ang responsible karoon sa kena may gehatag ni Mayor Mayo, Almario, regarding sa executive order nga.
Executive order?
Memo, memo, memorandum order, nga gehatag niya nga, uh, composition of inspectorate team. Uh, coming up at niya, si, appeal si Sir Jim. Dara, uh, Engineer Jerry Di Antipolo, Engineer Peter Rodriguez, Engineer Edward Porisima, Engineer Mari Corime Mualik, Mister Jeremias Sakapanyo, and Engineer Vidila M. Bisin. and engineer Vidila M. Bisin. The composition, Madam Chair, the project inspectorate team. Muhatag ni after that sa kwan, wala pa ma-final billing, mo-request sila for final inspection sa project. Then after that, muhatag ni sila o kwan, ah, findings then rectify sa maong contractor. After, after sa pagrectify nila, muhatag ni sila o kwan, certification of kwan na komplisyon.
Ah, sir, tinood ba by July, na turnover na daw? Based sa gisulti ni sir ganina sa iyahang speech?
Ah, Madam Chair, regarding sa gistorya sa na turnover, actually wala pa kay, kung proper turnover, ah, naapatay mga papilis, naatay mga final inspection report, inspectorate team, na mention ko ganina sa kwan ang gidiscaz regarding sa flow, wala pa. Katung iyang gistorya siguro sa nagturnover na, kwanan to, informal palang. Morabag partial palang siguro, substantially completed ang gitawag ni Ana.
Engineer, in your professional opinion as an engineer?
Yes, Your Honor.
Anang ginatawag ninyo nga informal turnover, is that legal in our laws of the Philippines?
Actually, Madam Chair, diligid siya legal kay kumbaga naapanas sa, kung under contract manggood ang maong project, naapas siya sa level sa contractor, dili pagid siya dapat mooccupy ang mga end user. Kaya wala pa man ma-final turnover, wala pa y proper acceptance. Diligid siya pwede, Your Honor.
So it's clear to me engineer na ilegal ang ginaingon niya nga na turnover na. Last question, second to the last question, engineer. Um, kailangan ba o certificate of komplisyon and inspection bago mabayaran sa kwarta sa katauhan ang contractor?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Pero nabayaran naman sila ninety percent, engineer, what happened?
Mauna siya gitawag, Your Honor, progressive billing siya, partial payment na siya, based sa accomplishment report na gihatag. Wala po may labot pa ni Ana, kung sa inspectorate team, dito na mi sa final. Tama? Ang, ang muadad na regarding sa accomplishment sa progressive billing si engineer Peter Rodriguez.
Thank you, Your Honor. In addition to engineer Auntie Polo, the progress billing is, dapat unta atong nagprogress sila, situate na nakomply nila tanan mga parameters bago ta mga kwan, hatag ana na percentage level.
So tama ba kong engineer nga, per tranch ang payment, first sample, first, second, third, fourth, dili dapat ihatag ang second or ang third? Kung waw pa na human, ang para sa second o sa third na trabaho unun, di ba?
Ah, depende na sa evaluation dito, Your Honor, kana. Maulagin ang akong na statement kanina, ang mga tabuwag, ah, answer lang yun ano, regarding to your query, is the previous ah, signatories. Kaya kami, igul lamni ni, ni comply karoon sa ang directive ni Mayor Mayo as a inspectorate team.
Yes, engineer.
Ang findings, totally.
Now engineer, nga ten percent na lang man ang atong deliverable sa ila, di ba? What will happen, unsa inyong mabuhat sa inyuhang part, kung ang ilahang trabaho unun, lampas pa sa ten percent ang kulang? Katupaday sa previous admin?
Ah, Your Honor, thank you. Dependen na sa contractor and the previous engineers na naghandle ani, a situation. Kaya kami naghatag lamni findings sa mga project, then submit to the office of city mayor. And that is the basis of the payment of the OCN.
Thank you so much, engineer no, pasensya kayo kaya kamu pa ang nadakdakan ni ani. Pero to close my questioning, because I have used up my ten minutes, I would like to say na, the reputation of this good construction company is not good. So it has been for how many years nga daghan kayo ang mga problema ang mga gibuhat na mga proyekto? And again, this is the money of the taong bayan. This is the money of the people of Mati City. And for the last, grabe ang, ang due diligence sa city, grabe kastrikto ang city, grabe kastrikto sa mga permit, kung naalay dunay balay nga sansan nga magpataod o electrical, magpataod lang o sugat sa dureko, paabtan pagtag two months bago makabitan. Mga requirement nga sanda makmak, twenty-one, twenty-two square meters lang ang balay. Grabe ang ato ang requirements na ginapangayo. Magparihistro sa city in whatsoever, not only sa electrical, not only sa building, not only sa mga gagmay nga mga negosyo, not only sa mga tolda-tolda. Pati na 'yung mga nag-register sa ato aron na mga toda, baga kayo greg requirements. Pero kaning kwarta sa katauhan sa suodad sa Mati nga million, 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 million nga, di pagyo na tuwa, nga nong dili man strikto. nga nong salig mangkok ang engineer nombrado and engineer sakko sa ilang gisulti sa akuha nga maunato, maski waw pa mapirmahan. I hope this is a lesson not only to us here, but all the officials and all the leaders nga naadri sa atong suodad. Thank you from the office of our engineering for pointing this out. Kaya kung waw ni ninyo gipanggawas, waw mo na pulihan diha? Di man 'yung manggawas na mga storya, sir? Maong salamat kayo sa inyuhang tanan and thank you everyone.
Madam Chair, may.
Yes, um, engineer Rodriguez, maybe you can just shorten your statement so that we can cater two more ah, question from two of our members.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. For information of the body, the new administration now, the city engineers office, nag ah, nagestablish na mi by division, na create na, who is the responsible of the planning stage, construction, division, maintenance and electrical section. So the previous is, m- motor nakita na to na, isa ah, nanatay check and balance. That's why nagcreate na mi karoon sa new administration na nanagui tai ah, organizational check for check and balance of this ah, project. Morning ni Abot, they come up ang mga.
Inspectorate na team ninyo, as part of the checks and balance of the city government of Mati.
Yes, Your Honor, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that state statement and clarity, engineer Rodriguez. But to also, in addition to the statement of Honorable Campos, um, actually, ato ang city engineers office, atong city of building official, they also base their mga requirements based on our, which is nakaordinanse na siya. And maybe this is also high time for us to also revisit our ordinance when it comes to the guidelines sa mga pag-process of mga permits, no? Um, I would like to recognize first, Honorable Makaubos, then lastly, our Honorable Anto Pesto.
And members of this ah, nine city council and all for in attendance. Ngah dili ten percent, na eight ten percent kanabilin, naapoy another ten percent nga retention, only all twenty percent. Second, unsa may himoon sa usa nga mag-final billing. First, the contractor ah, maghimo o sulat, ngato sa city engineering office requesting for final inspection sa maong project. After such, nga nakita sa ato ang inspectorate, nga ang ilahang gitarbaho ay exacto ang trabaho na human sa tamang mga oras, mo-recommend. Ang ato ang inspectorate nga indeed, ang maong proyekto is in good faith. That is the time na makakulit sila. I just want to correct na dili ten percent, twenty percent, ten percent na remaining and another ten percent retention. So only na only, one million, that is two million pa, ang ilahang supposed to be ngakuha unun, thank you.
Thank you for that clarifying, clarifying statement, Honorable Makaubos. And I would like to give the floor, lastly, to Honorable Anto Pesto. May I request Honorable Anto Pesto, since you already used up your time for your questioning, can you um, hangyan lang ako na mubun pa na to ang ato ang statement?
Thank you, Your Honor. One question, naglibog magugos sa kadaghan sa Domeral Construction nga gi-implement. Mangutan ako kay engineer Perpetua. Jong, ano bang papil mo, ikaw ba ang may ari ng Domeral? Sino ba ang may ari sa Domeral? So anong papil mo dyan? Okay, so, very nice answer. Last question, ah, last request, because I heard some project was implemented already. Pero there are some question. And may I request to this new inspectorate team to submit to us the signatories personalities during the time and please submit the program of works implemented since two thousand twenty up to two thousand twenty-four. That's my request, Your Honor.
Thank you for that very concise and direct um, query, Honorable Anto Pesto. And before na to ihuman atong question hour, ah, before na to ihatag balik ang floor to our guests, especially engineer Perpetua, allow me to also um, say a few statements. And again, as to reiterate pod ang manifestation or statement engineer Perpetua, whatever was the result of the findings of the inspectorate team, they have committed themselves na irectify ang maong mga nakita na mga findings para po ma-correct sa ato ang contractor. And at the same time, this is also a lesson learned to all of us here in the government na let us be vigilant and let us also ensure na tanan na ato ang gi-implement ng mga programa not only here in our city, in our locality, pasaka tibuk ano sa suodad and sa probinsya and sa distrito. Na let us be honest, let us be truthful in the implementation of the project. Kung kita mismo as public official, we have to also double check their work. And this is also an additional workload pod para sa ato ang chairperson, chairperson of the committee on infrastructure and public works na total na open na man na to ni na door. Why not let us also check every and all public infrastructure and government works here in our city, down to the barangay para maklaro yun na to, o ma-account yun na to, o sakto na nagamit ba, o sakto ang kwarta sa katauhan sa suodad sa Mati. And before, I would like to end, may I request again, our guest engineer Perpetua to now have the floor for your final remarks and commitment?
Ah, Your Honor, thank you for the invitation. And ako lagi manifest unta, kay next time, paggi-invite me o'tro, tagaan me o' proper na kanang guidelines kung unsa yun atong i-discuss. Karoon kay gipaan himan me dari bahin sa DSWD, ningan hin me for DSWD. Pero kung sunod, kung mingon mong damo e kinsy, binti, lima, pwede. Pero taga ilang me proper nga kwan kay para among ma-address. Otherwise, magdala me dari o kanang kwan kay para ma-address na to tanan kay, willing man me na, among na siyang i-kwan, i, okay, responsibilidad man na mo isip mga contractor na amohan na siyang trabaho ang gumun sa mangaling ang naadha. Pero dapat mainform lang me next time, na lang po, thank you.
Noted and thank you for your statement, engineer Perpetua. And again, a reminder to all of the members of this council, there is a reason as to why we also send our communications to our guests and naka-indicate po di to as to what concern they have to address. Pero ah, concerning to other matters, we can always ask that question on a separate um, meeting or we can have it on a committee level para mas ma-address na o sakto. As stated earlier by Honorable Campos, katu ng mga programs, if we want to projects, if we want to really check on it, let us not stop there. Let us also check on the other implemented public works here in our city, sa barangay, sa mga eskwelahan, para mahow- accountable yun ang tanan. Oh, para, at since we are a people's administration, it is only right time na um, tanan across all boards ang ato ang i-double check, not only a certain program, but across all public works and government infrastructure. So again, I would like to thank the presence of our guests from the Domeral Construction and Supply, engineer Perpetua and Mr. Castanyeda and also our inspectorate team from the city engineers office, thank you for your time and for also shedding the light as to unsa man ang proper, o procedure, o proper procedures. And also pasalamat po di sa ato ang guests from the Domeral for your commitment to also rectify and inyuhang sulbaro o inyuha pong pangitaan o pamaagi para ma-correctong mga findings na gi-presenta sa ato engineering's office. So if there are no more questions coming from this august body, ah, before na to i-excuse ang ato ang guests this afternoon, may we have a quick photo opportunity with our guests from the Domeral Construction Supply followed by, by our city engineers office inspectorate team. A few minutes raises is hereby declared. Shoom, we are still under unassigned business, ay, we are still under suspended, suspended house rules. May I request Honorable Campos for the lifting?
Madam Chair, I move that the house rules be reinstated, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Campos. So there is a motion by Honorable Campos for the lifting of the suspended house rules. Any member to second her motion, seconded by Honorable Sebelino and all members present, any objection, discussion? Hearing none, sa, ah, house rules are now lifted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Privilege or other ports observation.
We are now under privilege R, so any member from this council would like to avail of the privilege R. Honorable Campos, you are now recognized.
Madam Chair, due to the time constraint and we have a lot of matters to discuss and lots of resolutions as well, I request our honorable SP secretary to shorten the reading of the matters referred to us, Madam Chair.
Thank you, ah, Honorable Campos, note, ah, please take note of the suggestion of Honorable Campos. Where under the reading of the communication, may it be summarized. And any member who would still like to avail of the privilege R, Honorable Anto Pesto, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon again, presiding officers and colleagues and to our SP secretary. As a chairman of the committee on cooperative and livelihood, I would like to request the honorable body to allow this representation to present the fifteen association president officers who applied for accreditation and re-accreditation with the local government of Mati. With her respective representative, we have Mr. Sofronio Erno from the Warik, Erno, and we have Sunny Puriyo. We have Millenio Dindin of South Ban toda. We have Friedrich Sumambot of IR trading. We have Almer Salba of barangay Kulian toda. We have Mama Merabet Erigo from Mati. We have Mama Meribet Erigo from Mati City Lapagan Multipurpose Cooperative. We have Junatan Maglinis of Tagibo Tuda. We have Mr. Junatan Principal of Labcom Tuda. We have Ramon Disina of Sambuokan Village Tuda. We have Alejandro Luon from Highland Organic Agricultural Co-op. And we have Mr. Topistografis City, Mati City Publación Tuda. Madam Chair, ah, this is the person nga magpa-acredit, and we will assure na ang inyong accreditation with this council suportahan namo para mahimo giyong akreditado mo dinis atong ciudad. That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Anto Pesto. And again, madayaw na hapon o welcome to the representatives of the different todas, associations, cooperatives here in our city of Mati. Nadungan man inyo ang commitments sa tuang committee chair on cooperatives and livelihood na amo ang itackle ang re-accreditation of your different associations. So again, madayaw na hapon and welcome to our regular session. And nasayod ko, naka-muna papapod mo'y other matters to attend to this afternoon today. So maybe before we allow you to exit our session hall, da- ah, kung pwede na ami quick photo opportunity sa inyuha ng mga representante na tono. So a few minutes raises is hereby declared. Session is hereby resumed. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary? We are still under privilege R. I would like first to acknowledge Honorable Alcantara, followed by Honorable Pang and Honorable Campos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In this relation, Madam Chair, I'd like to, ah, resolution, Madam Chair, we have a resolution letter A under our Order of Business. I'd like to request this August body that this will be tackled under unassigned business, under suspended house rules, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Campos, Honorable Alcantara. So there is a request by Honorable Alcantara for the discussion of res-proposed resolution A under unassigned business, under suspended house rules. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
Honorable Pang, you are now recognized.
Good afternoon to all, Madam Chair. This representation would like to respectfully ask permission from the members of this August body that proposed resolution B in today's Order of Business to be discussed under unassigned business, under suspended house rules, for discussion and possible approval. And also, Madam Chair, for the following communication, though not certified urgent, but needs an appropriate legislative action. First, Communication Number 61, 2025, regarding the pre-reviewed Sanggunian annual, ah, Sanggunian Kabataan Annual Budget for Calendar Year 2025 o barangay signs. Communication Number 70, 2025, regarding the pre-reviewed annual budget of barangay Lawigan, supplemental budget number three for calendar year 2025 o barangay Macambol. Communication Number 71, 2025, regarding the pre-reviewed annual budget for calendar year 2025 o barangays, Don Enrique Lopez, Lanka, Luban, Mayo, and supplemental number one for calendar year 2025 o barangay central and Don Martin Marundan. Lastly, Communication Number 73, regarding the pre-reviewed Sanggunian Kabataan Annual Budget for calendar year 2024 o barangay Kulian and Luban. All these communications, Madam Chair, to be discussed under unassigned business, under suspended house rules. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. So there is a request by Honorable Pang for the discussion of proposed resolution B, Communication Number 61, 70, 71, and 73, to be tackled and discussed under unassigned business, under suspended house rules. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Madam Chair.
The floor is now yours, Honorable Campos.
Ah, Madam Chair, just for the records purposes, ah, I'd just like to respectfully ask the honorable body that I will be leaving early because my law school will start at 4:00 PM, Madam Chair.
Noted on that request, Honorable Campos. If there is no objection from this August body, you are hereby excused.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Any members who would still like to, um, make any manifestation? We are still under privilege R. If none, please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
For proposed ordinance for first reading none, proposed resolution, we have two proposed measures authored by Honorable Alcantara and Honorable Edmondopang Jr. to be discussed under unassigned business, suspended house rules. For communications and messages, Communication Number 59, since 2025, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto Committee on Good Government, complaint affidavit filed by Risa Datanagan against punong barangay Ilian Matute o barangay Lawigan. Communication Number 60, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation of Mati Central Transport Terminal Complex Tricycle Operators Drivers Association. Communication Number 61, referred to the Honorable Pang, to be discussed under unassigned business, suspended house rules pertaining to budget of Barangay. Communication Number 62, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation of Madang Public Market Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association. Communication Number 63, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation Lawigan Operators and Driver Association. Communication Number 64, same referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation of barangay Dawan Baobao Drivers and Operators Association. Communication Number 65, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation of Mati Indigenous Muslim and Development Association. Communication Number 66, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation of Dagahayusang Gagmayng Maigisda, Samati Alang Sakalambuan Federation Incorporated. Communication Number 67, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation of Don Martin Marundan Tricycle Operators Driver Association. Communication Number 68, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation of Macambol Single Motor Tricycle Operator Drivers Association. Communication Number 69, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation of Mati City Bueno Commercial Tricycle Operators Drivers Association. Communication Number 70, referred to the Honorable Edmondopang Jr. Communication Number 71, referred to the Honorable Pang, Chairman of Committee on Finance, pertaining to annual budget for calendar 2025 o barangay Don Enrique Lopez, Lanka, Luban, Mayo, and supplemental budget number one o barangay central and Don Martin Marundan, to be discussed under unassigned business, suspended house rules. Communication Number 72, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation, Sped Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association. Communication Number 73, referred to the Honorable Pang, Chairman of Committee on Finance, pertaining to pre-reviewed Sanggunian Kabataan Annual Budget o barangay Kulian and Luban for calendar year 2024. Communication Number 74, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation, Tamia, Don Martin, Marundan Tricycle Operator and Drivers Association. Communication Number 75, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation, Davo Oriental Health Personal Multipurpose Cooperative. Communication Number 76, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation, Bangsamoro Youth Association. Communication Number 77, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation of Diamond Women Workers Association. Communication Number 78, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation of Mati Greencom Agriculture Cooperative. Communication Number 79, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation, Mati Greencom Society. Communication Number 80, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for accreditation, Masau Lawigan Tamisan Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association. Communication Number 81, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation, Imaklit Heart of Mary Academy Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association Incorporated. Communication Number 82, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation, McDonald Tricycle Operators Drivers Association. Communication Number 83, referred to the Honorable Anto Pesto, request for re-accreditation, barangay science water system association incorporated. That's all for communications, Madam Chair. For committee report, committee report number 10 by Committee on Cooperative by the Honorable Anto Pesto.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Honorable Anto Pesto, you are now recognized for the render of committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee Report Number 10. This representation would like to render a committee report on number 10-2025 filed by the Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood for the accreditation and re-accreditation of the 15 Association. I believe, Madam Chair, all members were given a copies of this committee report. Now I move for the adoption of the committee report number 10-2025. I do sumo.
Thank you, Honorable Anto Pesto. So there is a motion by Honorable Anto Pesto for the adoption of Committee Report Number 10, Series of 2025, filed by the Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood. Any member to second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Valera, and all members present. Any discussions, objections? Hearing none, committee report is hereby adopted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Committee Report Number 11 by the Honorable Valera.
Honorable Valera, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, Madam. Committee Report Number 11-2025. I believe that all members of this council has a copy of the committee number, Report Number 11, 2025. This representation, as a Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture, Fisheries, and Aquatic Resources, together with the whole composition of this committee, would like to pass and render Committee Report Number 11, 2025. The recommendation of this committee stated in the Committee Report Number 11, 2025, related to the proposed passage of City Ordinance Number 644, Series of 2025, and ordinance requesting all beach resource owners, and regardless of the location within the territorial jurisdiction of the city of Mati, provide us a road right uwi for our fisherfolk and shell collectors to pass through their title property for economic activities. It's to differ for the moment, the passage for each second reading, considering that the zoning coordination is involved here according to the City Assistant's Office, until such time that the city assistants will have it on recommendation to be submitted to the committee for the establishment of the road right uwi. This committee hereby explicitly and uni- uh, unique po- vocally expresses it falls support for the swift passage of this ordinance. It is the sincerest intention of this committee to have this legislative measure be act upon immediately. But unfortunately, sometimes there are things to consider why some legislative measures is differ for its passage. So may intention, Honorable Chair, tungod kay nakita pod na ko na maayong intensyon sa tuang Pil Mati and Mati Parastanan. So ako nakita tungod kay sonar litter mo abut ang panahon na magkataas magkataas ang aprisal, then talk about of compensation sa tuang mga kayutaan sa ciudad sa Mati, especially na sa tuang mga beaches na mamahimo niya na mag- problema pagod or taas na niya ang mga balyo. Then considering event na tuang mga tourist path o tourist destination maupun ilahang ginabati na daghan na mga tourist path na pwidi kaantuan, but ang problema ang pagsulod gumikan kay walay mga road right uwi o walay volunteer na mawatak kundili pinaghi sa compensation. So therefore, Honorable Chair, with this, I move for the adoption of this committee report, Number 11, 2025. I do sumo, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Valera. So there is a motion by Honorable Valera for the adoption of Committee Report Number 11, Series of 2025, filed by the Committee on Food, Agriculture, Fisheries, and Aquatic Resources pertaining to proposed passage of City Ordinance Number 644, Series of 2025. Any members to second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Barton. And all members present, any objections? Discussions? Hearing none. Committee Report Number 11 is hereby adopted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
For our calendar business, non-finish business, business for the day for second reading, product of committee report number 10, a proposed resolution by the Honorable Anto Pesto.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Honorable Anto Pesto, you may now have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Mr. Madam Chair. In behalf of the Committee on Cooperative and Livelihood, I would like to move for a passage of a resolution approving the application for re-accreditation of Mati Publación Tricycle Operators and Driver Association, Badas Kamansi Punta Tagawisan Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association Incorporated, Southbound Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, ER Trading Tricycle Operators Drivers Association, Barangay Kulian Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, Mati City Lapagan Multipurpose Cooperative Kunmalako, Tagibo Tricycle Operators Tagibo Tricycle Operators Drivers Association, Likop Anislag Binagyuhan, Kuabo, Uligan, Magpikit Tricycle Operators Drivers Association, Highland Organic Agricultural Cooperative, Davao Oriental Provincial Hospital Tricycle Operators Drivers Association, Davao Oriental Federated Vineyard Workers Association, Mati City Publasyon Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, and for the application for the accreditation of PD Cover Driver Warwick SLP Association, barangay Libudon, Tuda, and Sambuukan Village Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association. I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Antopesto. So there is a motion by Honorable Antopesto for the passage of a resolution that he just stated. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Pabio and all members present. Any objection, discussion, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Subject for the suspension of house rules, Madam Chair. There are various measures manifested by our city councillors for discussion and possible approval.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Noted. For us to cater all the unassigned business matters, may I request Honorable Dayang Hirang for the conversion of this august body to a committee as a whole at the same time for the suspension of the house rules.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I move for the suspension of the house rules and at the same time, the conversion of this august body into committee as a whole. I so move.
Thank you, Honorable Dayang Hirang. So there is a motion for the conversion of this august body to a committee as a whole and at the same time, for the suspension of the house rules. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Pabio and all members present. Hearing no objections, discussions, motion is hereby carried. We are now under committee as a whole and house rules are now suspended. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
The proposed measure of Honorable Alcantara pertaining to proposed resolution A.
Noted, Mr. Secretary. Honorable Alcantara, you may now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The floor is now open for the discussion in relation to the resolution, letter A. A resolution earnestly requesting the office of the city mayor to direct all its implementing units to enforce the DILG memorandum circular number 2024-026 on the prohibition of the illegal operation of the colorom operators in the public transportation terminals.
So the floor is now open for any discussion or queries pertaining to the proposed draft resolution of Honorable Alcantara. If there are none, please proceed, Honorable Alcantara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With this, I now move for the adoption as a committee of a whole recommendation for the passage of the said resolution later on, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Alcantara. So there is a motion for the adoption of the committee as a whole. Recommendation, proposed resolution A, as stated by Honorable Alcantara. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Dayang Hirang and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Proposed measure of Honorable Pang pertaining to resolution B in today's session.
Honorable Pang, you may now have the floor and you can have a lumpsome discussion of the several communications under committee on finance.
Madam Chair, with regards to my proposed resolution, letter B, the floor is now open for any discussion.
So the floor is now open for any discussion or queries pertaining to proposed resolution B as presented by Honorable Pang. If there are none, please proceed, Honorable Pang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation for the passage of a resolution. Resolution enjoining all public, private, and commercial establishments in the city of Mati to provide accessible, clean, functional, and well-maintained comfort rooms, handwashing areas, and the surroundings of the establishment for the use of their personnel, customers, clients, and patrons. I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. So there is a motion by Honorable Pang for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation, proposed resolution B, as he just stated. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Pabio and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Please proceed, Honorable Pang.
Madam Chair, the floor is now open for the discussion of communication number sixty-one and seventy-three, series of 2025, all Sangguniang Kabataan annual budgets, Madam Chair.
Noted, Honorable Pang. You made mention the floor is now open for any discussion or queries pertaining to communication number sixty-one and seventy-three?
Yes.
Any questions? If there are none, please proceed, Honorable Pang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I now move for the adoption of committee as a whole recommendation as requested, communication number sixty-one, seventy-three, and seventy-three, series of 2025. I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. So there is a motion for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation for communication number sixty-one and seventy-three. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Masagnay and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Please proceed, Honorable Pang.
Madam Chair, the floor is now open for the discussion of communication number seventy and seventy-one, series of 2025, all barangay budgets, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. So the floor is now open for any questions or discussions pertaining to the two communication, communication number seventy and seventy-one. If there are none, please proceed, Honorable Pang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I now move for the adoption of committee as a whole recommendation as requested in communication number seventy and seventy-one, series of 2025. I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. So there is a motion by Honorable Pang for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation, communication number seventy and seventy-one. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Masagnay and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary? May I request Honorable Dayang Hirang for the conversion of this committee back to plenary.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I move for the conversion of this august body back to plenary. I so move.
Thank you, Honorable Dayang Hirang. So there is a motion by Honorable Dayang Hirang for the conversion of this committee back to plenary. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Makaubos and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, we are now under plenary. The floor is now yours, Honorable Alcantara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I pass this resolution, Mr. Chair, I just have a short statement, Madam Chair, in relation to my resolution, Madam Chair. We are respectfully asking for the understanding and support for this resolution as it is a sincere effort to make our daily commutes safer and more reliable for everyone. We know that change can be difficult and we want to assure those who may be affected that this measure is not meant to cause hardship. Instead, it is a way to ensure and more organize and secure public transportation system for all of us. For our commuters, this resolution is about protecting your safety. By implementing this rule, we are ensuring that the vehicles you ride in, that the vehicles you ride in are properly inspected, maintained, and operated by licensed drivers. This is about giving you peace of mind every time you step out of your home or let your kids ride in our public utility vehicles. For our legitimate public utility drivers and operators, this resolution is about creating a level playing field. It is not fair to those who follow all rules and pay the proper fees to compete with illegal operators. By addressing the colorom issue, we are protecting your livelihood and ensuring that your hard work and compliance are rewarded. This measure helps create a more just, a sustainable transportation sector for all. Ultimately, this is a humble request for the safety and well-being of our community. We believe that by working together, we can build a public transportation system that is secure, fair, and reliable for every visitor and resident of the city of Mati. At this point, Madam Chair, I now move for the passage of the resolution. A resolution earnestly requesting the office of the city mayor to direct all its implementing units to enforce the DILG memorandum circular 2024-026 on the prohibition of the illegal operation of colorom operators in public transportation terminals. I do so move, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Alcantara. So there is a motion by Honorable Alcantara for a passage of a resolution that he just stated. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Masagnay and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Congratulations, Honorable Alcantara, and I strongly support as well your resolution. Honorable Pang, you may now have the floor. You may do a lumpsome passage.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I now move for a passage of resolution. A resolution enjoining all public, private, and commercial establishments in the city of Mati to provide accessible, clean, functional, and well-maintained comfort rooms, handwashing areas, and the surroundings of the establishment for the use of their personnel, customer, clients, and patrons. I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. So there is a motion by Honorable Pang for a passage of a resolution that he just stated. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Pabio and all members present. Hearing no objections, discussion, motion is hereby carried. Please proceed, Honorable Pang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I have here eleven resolution, Madam Chair. The first three are all SK annual budgets, while the remaining eight resolutions are all barangay annual budget. Madam Chair, I now move for the passage and approval of the eleven resolution. I do so move.
Thank you, Honorable Pang. So there is a motion by Honorable Pang for a passage of eleven resolution that he just manifested. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Valera and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we are still under suspended house rules. May I request Honorable Dayang Hirang for the lifting of the suspended house rules.
Madam Presiding Officer, I move for the lifting of the suspended house rules. I so move.
Thank you, Honorable Dayang Hirang. So there is a motion by Honorable Dayang Hirang for the lifting of the suspended house rules. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Masagnay and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Suspended house rules are now lifted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Announcement, other matters.
We are now under announcement and other matters. Any member who would like to avail of that, Honorable Dayang Hirang, you may now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I would like to inform and invite all the members of the Philippine Councillors League to the first continuing local legislative education program, or CLEP, which will be held on September seventeen to nineteen, two thousand twenty-five, at the Grand Regal Hotel, Davao City. Nai-registration of nineteen thousand five hundred per delegate on twin sharing to be collected to cover the accumulation, meals, venue, training materials. Kung pwede unta, by next week maka confirm na ang matagusa kay paranatay arrangements sa rooms and other concerns na'to. Mas maayong maka preregistration ta before September twelve. Ang other updates unyan na lang after the regular session. Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you for that announcement, Honorable Dayang Hirang. And I have also an announcement here provided by our secretary. This came from the Department of Interior and Local Government pertaining to the conduct of the NeoPlus Training Course entitled Strategic Leadership for Governance Introductory Course for Newly Minded Official, which is scheduled on September two to four, twenty twenty-five, at Soto Grand Davao Hotel, Crocodile Park Avenue, Ma'a, Davao City. So, which is tomorrow. So I believe all members of this council were copy furnished of this communication and then hopefully, majority of us can attend the seminar. Except for the SK, ABC and IPMR. It is only for the regular members. We'll discuss it later. Ikaw, the OIC will be Honorable Tomas. For vice, for vice and for mayor. OIC would be our ABC president, Honorable Makaubos. So if there are no more announcements, they are none. May I request Honorable Alcantara for our adjournment and for the closing prayer.
Madam Chair, now move for the adjournment of this regular session. I do so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Alcantara. So there is a motion for the adjournment of today's regular session. Any members to second his motion, seconded by Honorable Masagnay and all members present. Any objections, discussions, hearing none, motion is hereby carried. Session is now adjourned.
Kay let us pray. Bismillah. A'udzubillahumma nashaitaana regime, bismillah rahmanir rahim. Alhamdulillahir bil alamin, rahmanir rahim. Maliki yow midin, iyya khainabudu, iyya khainastain. Idina sirathal mustaqim, sirathal idina, and amta alaihim. Gairil magdubia alaihim, ulag dalin. Amin.